I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sure, Cindy Charney, Chuck Lewis, Joseph Shaw, Greg Trader, Alex Rodriguez, Dan Van Wick, and myself, George Needles, present.
All right, next on the agenda, public comments. I guess that's a no. When I have any, when I have anybody calling in? Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November Planning Commission meeting. I guess I'd like to see if we can push that back to January for the vote. I mean, do I, do I need to? It doesn't seem like everybody's ready to vote on the minutes for the November meeting. We're just wondering if we could push it back to January? Okay, do we need to do a vote on it or anything, or? Somebody want to?
Do I make a motion to table approval of the November minutes until January?
Okay, do I hear a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, so, January it is. Next on the agenda is the 3033 Market Street subdivision land development application presentation.
Good evening, my name is Joel Commanda with Inland Design. Excuse me if I cough, I have a non-COVID lingering cough from last weekend. I'm here tonight to present the changes that we've made on the 3033 Market Street project in response to the last meeting we had. I have Matt Hammond from Traffic Plan and Design here with me as well tonight, in case we get into more detailed discussion of any of the traffic issues. Just show you on the overall site plan. The overall plan has not changed significantly, but as you'll recall, at the last meeting, there were concerns raised with the traffic entering and exiting this northern driveway. And the possible interaction with the traffic at the Royal Farms across the street. So based on those comments and the team went back and we looked at it again. And what's been done is that the northern entrance has been turned into an emergency access only with a chain across it during normal activity. And the entrances to both this northern new site and the existing site would all come through this relocated southern driveway. As a part of that, the drive aisle across the front of the northern property widened to allow the truck traffic to access through there more easily. And that's really the only major change as part of this submission. We do review letters, we got a review letter from SiteL Planning. And he was overall very much in favor of this revision. Liked the fact that we're limiting the accesses to one for both sites and sharing that. We also have the review letter from Alex from Patania. Excuse me. He has two outstanding traffic comments and then a few general comments. The general comments are ones that appeared on the letter a few times and Alex and I have discussed them. They're ones that we are deferring until we get to final plan stage. Currently, the plan is before you as a preliminary submission. The traffic comments are ones that, you know, as a part of this entrance here, we will be making an HOP submission to PennDOT for the improvements surrounding that entrance. And the details of those that work and the lane adjustments are to be worked out with PennDOT and obviously with the township's input as well during that process. So I'm happy to discuss any of those in more detail if you have any more questions. But we're before you tonight, hoping that you're ready to give us a recommendation for preliminary approval. So we can move on to final plans, get into a little more of the detailed design and make the application PennDOT and start working out some of those details.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes, I go through that, that intersection almost every day. And the current traffic that you have coming through, coming out the entrance that you're proposing to use entirely is a problem in and of itself. It's too close to the intersection where Meeting House dead ends. You have tractor trailers who attempt to make a left turn out of there. And you're faced with a backup of traffic that gets stopped at the light right there. And if any of your traffic is coming out and wanting to make a left, everybody's got, first of all, the traffic comes over a hill and approaches that intersection. All right, so 490 Pendle Road gets backed up as it is. But then when you have to negotiate traffic coming out of there, it just adds to the backup. So I think that's a, that's, that's just a bad place for your traffic to come in and out of. Now, what I might suggest is that instead of coming out in your other exit, which is right across from Royal Farms, why don't you come out and exit further north? That's across from, I think it's that other business, I think it's an auto business or something, a tire business or something like that. A car, no, it's not, yeah, is it a car wash? Yeah, it's a car wash. Well, if you could, if you could come out right across from the car wash, there's, there's much less for you to negotiate. The only thing you really have to worry about is traffic that's turning north from Meeting House. Who, you know, they're going to have to run into whatever traffic comes from your facility out onto Pendle Road. But where you want that stuff to come out, no, that's not a good idea at all. Uh, okay, so that part of it is okay. All right, but there's, there are several problems that I don't think your study took into account. When people hit the crest, they can see the light at Meeting House. I've seen more than enough cars and trucks speed in order to make that light. As soon as they get that crest and they see that it's green, those, those, those drivers speed up in order to make that light. You're, you're proposing to have your traffic come in and out closer to the crest. So that means people who, who get on it, on top of that thing, see that they can make that light. Now they're closer to your traffic that's coming in and out. I see a problem with that. The other thing is, I wouldn't support this if you allow your traffic to make left turns out of the lot.
We placed this we placed the driveway where we placed it. So we did take into account the people coming over the hill and how fast they're traveling. We actually recorded those travel speeds. As far as the lefts in, lefts out, full access is absolutely necessary for these uses. And I can tell you that based on the analysis that we did and what we looked at, it absolutely works. What's being proposed as far as this existing building is concerned is not a high-traffic generator. Obviously, there's traffic in and out to that existing use, but we are proposing a full-access driveway. And I can tell you from a traffic perspective, it does work. Limiting a movement out of there will only cause more traffic issues. So if you would limit the left out of this driveway, anyone that wanted to go southbound on Market Street would circulate around and try to figure out how to get back that way, whether it's through some of the neighborhoods down on Meeting House, or whether they come up and turn around in Royal Farms. So being that we can accommodate this movement from a traffic perspective, we are proposing a full-access driveway here.
Do you have access to Bethel?
The overall property, let me show you the overall plan. The overall property plan is shown here. Bethel, you know, is off the page, up to the north here, there's another, these two adjoining properties have access onto Bethel, I believe, but we do not.
I see a problem.
Anybody else?
I wasn't able to attend the last meeting where you made a presentation. And I was wondering if you could walk me through the changes that you made to the lanes. You mentioned that there is a southbound left-turn lane now.
So it's not shown on the plan yet, but the traffic site, when we completed the traffic site, and I wasn't here at the last meeting either, so we're on the same boat. But the traffic site, it was completed and submitted as part of this application, called out that a left-turn lane into this driveway is warranted, a separate left-turn lane. So what's not depicted on the plan, there's this war area here, this striping. You come up and there's a left-turn lane here that goes on the Meeting House. So what we would propose to do is put what's called a back-to-back left. We'd put a left-turn lane in here, and that may require a little bit of widening through this area in order to accomplish that. But essentially, when you're coming southbound, you come past Meeting House, you would have a through lane. And you would have a separate left-turn lane to allow vehicles to queue to turn left into the driveway, just not shown on this plan yet.
Okay, that's one of my concerns is the traffic coming northbound on 452 with the traffic coming out of this development and getting into that left-turn lane. How many vehicles can that left-turn lane onto Meeting House hold? Because what I'm wondering is going to happen if you're going to have people in the through lane, you know, who need to make a left turn but can't get into the left-turn lane and therefore all of the traffic backs up on 452.
Great question. I don't, I'll see if I have the actual distance of that. But the, the left-turn lane that we put in the driveway would not preclude or would not negatively affect what exists out there today in far as the queueing is concerned. So anyone, there's, there would be enough room left over for anyone that wants to make a left here to get into this lane and still afford people the ability to get into the back-to-back left. We're not proposing to provide a left that would negatively affect the existence of that. I can tell you that that's something that we did look at to make sure that we can provide that left. And it's also something that would be very heavily scrutinized when we make an application of PennDOT. They're going to be more concerned with Market Street and Meeting House Road, how that operates more so than our driveway. So they're going to make sure that their roadways work. And we have to show to them, prove to them that we can accommodate the traffic and the improvements that we're proposing.
So when you come back, you'll be able to give us more specifics about the number of cars that could be in that left-turn lane?
Hopefully, I can tell you.
Because today, you know, traffic, the lane's wide enough that traffic, maybe it's not legal, but they can get around on the left side of a car that's going straight through and the traffic continues to flow. So my concern is that you get several people turning left onto Meeting House and it backs up beyond the driveway and nobody moves until the left turns can be made and there's no left-turn signal there.
So currently, the left lane turn for Meeting House will hold three cars, three standard-sized cars. That's the extent of that turn lane. Well, three standard-sized cars, that's it. Any trucks that you have, any semis that you have making left turns onto Pendle, well, southbound, on Pendle Road goes over the curve of the southbound lane. There's just not enough, Pendle Road is not wide enough for a semi to make a left turn coming out of that lot, going south on Pendle Road. It ends up having to go onto the curb, curb side of the property across from it.
So that'll be one thing, and you're correct, the, the left-turn lane is 80 feet, about 80 feet long, so three cars, 25 feet apiece, or 20 feet, four cars, anyway. And then our, the left that we need is 75 feet, so about 150 feet in that area. And I'd mentioned the driveway's back about 200 feet, so there's a little bit of play there. I will tell you that in terms of the driveway, one of the comments that Alex had in his review letter was to make sure that we can get trucks in and out and to increase the radius if necessary, the width of the driveway. So those trucks, when they exit, they can stay in their lane when they exit, whether it's a left, whether it's a right, and not cross over other properties. In addition to that, as I mentioned before, we will need to make an application of PennDOT for a highway occupancy permit. As part of that, again, in addition to the left-turn lanes, in addition to the queuing, in addition to the site distance, PennDOT will scrutinize the driveway, make sure that we can show the trucks can get in and out safely and efficiently. And at the end of the day, we're able to make a significant improvement to what exists today. I mean, these, there's trucks in and out of this existing facility today. This is not something that we're adding. That exists 50 feet from the intersection and would cause, and does cause a lot of congestion in that area. By moving this back, it's a big improvement.
You need to widen Pendle Road.
I, I have some same concerns that Greg does about the turning radius and also about the sight line from the base of the bridge that, you know, the trucks, when cars coming over the bridge, we'll be able to see traffic stopped at the light. But then my question is, will you seek the PennDOT approval before or after you ask the planning commission to approve this plan? Which comes first?
Well, right now, we're asking for a recommendation for preliminary approval. There's some work, obviously, if we're able to get the preliminary approval, recommendation from the planning commission and go to the board and get recommendation for, get preliminary approval. There's work that needs to be done between preliminary and final. I will tell you that as part of that work, we will be making an application to PennDOT. Whether or not that permit is issued by the time we're ready for final, I couldn't tell you. The PennDOT process is a long process, but we will be far enough along by the time we come back for final that we'll pretty, pretty good spot and have a pretty good understanding of what PennDOT will, will not allow. And there'll, there'll be a more further refined design of the driveway, of the left-turn lane and whatever widening may be necessary to effectuate that. I can't guarantee that by the time we come back for final, I have a permit. It's likely that we wouldn't just based on PennDOT's timing, but we'll be far enough along that everyone should feel comfortable.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
If I can add to that, just from our perspective, you know, obviously, you guys have seen, this is the third or fourth sort of version of access points. And so we've held off on making the application of PennDOT because we want to make sure that before we go into them, we have something that the township is, you know, would agree is, is sort of the best thing we can, we can do here. Excuse me, so we are looking to get that preliminary recommendation so that we know that, you know, we're on the right track before we, you know, take the, the step of making the full submission to PennDOT.
Now, the last time you were in here, we had actually touched on a four-way intersection. I guess that kind of.
Yeah, the, the four-way intersection, we've looked at that, and that was something that was commented on earlier in the process. In a perfect world, a four-way intersection would work well. Unfortunately, it has some negative effects on the ability to develop, fully develop this, the lot in question, 30303. And it's a fairly significant expense as well. So because of that, it's the reason why we're taking the approach of moving the driveway further away, trying to fix some of the existing issues. And obviously, spending money to do that, but making sure that that's a viable option. Whereas creation of this fourth leg would have a severe negative impact on the ability to develop that parcel.
Yeah, because, I mean, I was a big fan of the four-way intersection and unless I see something that I can be very assured with, with the traffic. Because basically, moving the driveway down, you're talking, so maybe that's what, two tractor trailers are going to be able to sit to make a left-hand turn into the lot? So anything more than that, now you're on the other side of the intersection backing up and then nobody can make So anything more than that, now you're on the other side of the intersection backing up and then nobody can make a left-hand turn because now the left-hand turn lane won't go into, you know, Meeting House is not blocked. I mean, something that's simple, now you just shut down the whole intersection.
So keep in mind, this is a twenty-six thousand square foot building. This is not a building that's going to experience significant amount of volume. Obviously, there's trucks that enter and exit this existing facility, but this is not a building that you're going to see tractor trailers.
Well, I know they're not, I know they won't be constantly coming and going. I've gone up and down that road and I haven't seen really, but to me, there, there's enough northbound traffic many times throughout the day that a tractor trailer wouldn't be able to make a left into the lot for some time, which the longer he sits, then the odds are there's going to be somebody piling up behind. So it seems like it did very well just based on the amount of traffic going northbound on 452. That could cause a major grid block there instantaneously.
All I would ask is that there's obviously tractor trailers which are still sitting on the lot today, beginning at a southern knot with the driveway that's fifty feet back. So a tractor trailer waiting to make a left in, but actually sit in Meeting House.
Yes, and, and I've seen that plenty of times.
So I mean, obviously, this is an improvement by moving that now. I don't know how many times, again, I'm not here on a daily basis, I don't know how many times anyone's observed multiple tractor trailers waiting to make a left into that driveway, possibly grid block intersection. It's impossible or it's not possible. And I think this is a marked improvement to what exists out there. We're talking about a twenty-six thousand five hundred foot building that's got some retail portion of it, but most of it is storage, like a Granger type of use.
Matt or Joel, could you, could you, with this secondary structure being built, how many additional bays get added to this site, trucking base?
So there are bays located in the rear, I believe, it's either two or three. I don't remember for sure, but there's definitely no more than three.
And they're not, and that's not something, it's, it's not like there should be two or three tractor trailers sitting there, it could be a box truck.
Correct. And you mentioned a use, like a Granger. What are, what are some of the typical tenants that would go into a typical, this type of facility?
Like a plumbing supply facility where contractors come in and pick up plumbing supplies, but they have that warehouse area where they can store the materials, electrical supply, electrical contractor supply, Granger, those type of uses is what we would envision at this building because it does have that small retail component, but the majority of it's for storage of materials.
I've seen mostly on trucks of the, the, the box type trucks. That's, that's the most traffic I've seen coming in and out, but occasionally I do see tractor trailers that, that have difficulty making a left turn out of your lot. I would still suggest, especially with the box trucks, because it just depends on the politeness of people going north to allow them in. And other folks who end up getting caught at that light get agitated. And you see, you see a lot of, you know, horn blowing and stuff like that when, when people want to allow the box trucks to, to go out, especially if they're going to make a left turn on Meeting House. I still think your other exit, the, the, the other one that you have north of Meeting House, if you can move that further away from Meeting House, I still think that's a better one for your use.
Fortunately, this is the property.
It's not their property.
We don't have any other, we've moved it as far back as possible. This is the line here. We don't have any more room to move it further north. If, if there was more property, absolutely, I agree with you, we would have moved that further up, but that's pretty much all we have to work with at this point.
Then I, I hate to sound the negative. I was, I mean, we, we're here to try to give you insight as to how you get these projects through or at least get our, our thumbs up on it. I would suggest you, you reach out to PennDOT about a widening project for Pennell Road. Otherwise, I just, I see a problem.
The other thing too is, so you're going to move the driveway further towards the bridge. How far are you on top of the bridge at that point? Because.
We're not, we're further down. I, as again, one of the things that was made clear to us when we looked at the possibility of moving this driveway further south was the bridge and the visibility of someone coming over the crest and being able to see someone that wanted to turn into that driveway in advance. So we looked at the site distance and we took the speeds of the travel when you come over the crest and utilized that to calibrate the site distance we needed, right? So PennDOT has certain criteria that says if the speed limit is X, you need Y. If it is Z, you need A. We get in one, one step further, instead of utilizing the posted speeds, which I think everyone would agree that vehicles are traveling faster than the posted speeds out there, we recorded the speeds and used that again to calibrate the site distance. Based on that calibration, based on those numbers, we meet or exceed the site distance requirements that PennDOT would require for us at that driveway. Just to make it clear, site distance is an absolute as far as PennDOT is concerned. It's not, I'm close or I'm almost there. It is, you meet or exceed it or you don't get the driveway or the movement. So we have to prove to them beyond a reasonable doubt that we exceed their requirements from a site distance perspective.
What were those numbers? And what time of day did you do the site study?
So the speed study was taken, if I have the date, it's usually taken during off-peak hours. So it's during when traffic is flowing through the area because obviously you don't want to go out and do speed studies during the peak hours when traffic is backed up. You want to do the, the speed study during times when the traffic is flowing. That's when you're going to find the higher speeds in traffic. And what we found in the northbound direction was the average, was called the eighty-fifth percentile speed was forty-two miles an hour. And in the southbound direction, it was forty-four miles an hour. People actually coming southbound are actually traveling a little bit faster than people going northbound. When that was utilized, a radar gun was utilized to collect that data. The sample size is at least a hundred vehicles in each direction during those time periods when traffic is flowing. So that's the information that was collected. The raw data was included in the traffic study was provided for review, but that was the data that was collected.
The reason I was going to ask about how pushwork of the bridge, i- is, is there a slope on the driveway that leads up to 452?
It's, it's fairly level in that area.
Okay. So I was just wondering, can a truck really be able to negotiate some decent speed merging onto 452, coming up that ramp and then hanging a left to go up the bridge?
Yeah, there's that, again, as, as Joel mentioned, this is pretty level here. If you guys could picture in your mind the facility in the frontage of the existing building, this driveway is kind of right front, right in the corner of where that, the north side of the building. So when you're driving, next time you're driving by the site, it's midnight, tomorrow morning, whatever it is, the driveway, if you look straight at the building, that driveway is going to be left side of that.
While they do that, I just have another question about this, the data you collected for the speed study. Is that in the traffic analysis?
That is in, so there's, there's discussion of it in the text, but then that data is also included in the appendix.
Okay. And I think we all have a copy of that.
Matt, while they're pulling that up, how many, many right turns going into this combined driveway now, what do we have?
Proposed or you say today?
No, yeah, when it's, when you, when now we combine every, the both uses into one driveway.
Sure.
What's the peak right turns in?
To answer Alex's question, we are projecting in the AM peak hour, because we look at the peak hours of traffic. During the AM peak hour, we're projecting thirty vehicles making a right turn into the driveway from Market Street and twenty-two vehicles making a right out. In the PM peak hour, it is twenty-one vehicles making a right in and thirty-nine vehicles making a right out. So thank you, George, for pulling this up. So right now, the driveway is pretty much, here's the stop bar, here's the existing driveway serving this building. We're proposing to move the driveway down here, right about here. Here's the top, the crest of the bridge, we're right about here, right where the E is, or right between the K and the E. That's a pretty good, I mean, this is a.
Can we get the street view from where that is?
So that's, again, that's, that's the crest right there of the bridge, and the driveway is up here.
So while you're getting that view, the, the, the issue will be for you is the fact that you've moved closer to the crest. And people can see the lights when they hit the top of that crest. And when traffic, and you need to do your site study more than just off-peak. You need to do, incorporate another study that, that shows how traffic is doing, because our, our peaks are longer than they used to be.
Sure, sure, don't get me wrong, Alex, don't interrupt. Our traffic study is done on the peaks. When we collect the speed data, only the speed data, collect that off-peak. Because collecting speed data during peak is not real, is not reflective in the normal course of the day. So everything else was collected during the peaks, the counts, the traffic counts, all the analysis was done during the peaks, everything, the whole traffic study was done during the peaks. The only thing that was done off-peak was collection of the speed data.
So today, I went through the intersection at about one fifty appointment, about twenty minutes to two. And the, the, this is normal for this part of 452. To back up right to where you proposed coming out, that, that's how far back the traffic is. It wasn't like that when I moved into the area in two thousand eight, it's like that daily. So that's what you're going to, you're going to face blockage of where you want to come out, where you're proposing to come out. And you're going to face that daily, if, especially if your trucks were during a normal business hours where your trucks have to get in and out, that's what you're going to face.
Any other comments?
While we're looking here at the existing entrance, I just wanted to, to stress again, the, the existing entrance as it is today, excuse me, is, is, I think, twenty-five feet wide. And I'm not quite sure what the radiuses are, but somewhere in the, in the range of thirty-foot radiuses, something like that. So as I believe Mr. Trainer mentioned, a truck exiting that has to go across all of 452 to get out of there. With the new proposed entrance, we're looking at a thirty to thirty-five feet wide driveway with expanded radiuses, which would allow a truck movement that doesn't have to cross all across 452. So again, with a, with a minor increase in traffic from the new building, we're looking at a major improvement to the current condition that is there today. And I think, I think it's going to provide a benefit. We all know there, there are existing issues there and there may continue to be some difficulty, but this is going to be a major improvement over, over what's there today from very minor increase in traffic.
I do have another question. So thinking about PennDOT again and the need for a left turn arrow on Market Street North onto Meeting House Road, is that something you would be willing to pay for if they required it?
Yes. What I'll tell you is that as part of this whole application that we'll need to make to PennDOT and the things that they'll get, is the operation of that signalized intersection and whether or not there are modifications that need to be made, either to the equipment or the phasing or the timing. As part of that, we would look at whether or not a left turn arrow is warranted. PennDOT has certain criteria that must be met in order for a left turn arrow to be added, but I will commit that if that was something, if we did meet that warrant and that was something that beneficial to the intersection, then we would absolutely provide that as part of our application.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We want the intersection to work the best, we want to optimize it, we want that intersection to work the best it can. It not only benefits the residents and the commuters through that intersection, but it benefits our use as well as the driveway. So we're going to look to optimize the operation, make it work the best.
Anything, anything else? All right. So you're looking for a preliminary approval tonight?
Recommendation for preliminary approval.
Okay. Anybody want to propose a motion for? Let's just do this.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve a preliminary recommendation?
Before we do that, can we just confirm, Alex, do you have any other issues that we need to consider?
I don't have any other issues as far as what we said in the letter. I guess Matt is, Matt is, you're, you're giving the board, you, you're going to, you're basically trying to tell the board that you will be basically making sure that the signalized intersecting, intersection will be optimized to get the, I guess, let's, let's say, what is the existing level of service versus what, what we can get to it? For, for example, that, you're, you're making a statement to them that it's going to be improved.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that whatever we need to do to improve the operation of that signal from a capacity standpoint.
Right. So what is our, what's our, right. So what's our level of service today versus what you think you can theoretically maximize the improvement to see if we're, to make sure that they understand what type of performance optimization can be done at this intersection?
Right now, the overall intersection level of service is a level of service is a B as in void. And we're proposing it to be B as in void in the future, but we're, we would propose to reduce to the extent possible the delays that exist at that intersection, reduce the queue. I couldn't tell you if we're going to reduce it by one car or two cars. What I could tell you is that as with any project that is on a state roadway that has or touches a signalized intersection, we are required to optimize its operation. And to make sure that the timing at that signal and any other signals that are linked to that signal are such that it works the best it can work, given the, the parameters and constraints.
But it's a B, you're saying?
Correct.
And.
What does that mean?
Well, I mean, but I guess they, they had it by how many seconds you're being delayed at that intersection, but you, you know, you living in a town, I guess. I thought I heard that people are.
About seven-thirty every morning and I sit and wait forever.
I mean, if it's totally congested, it just seems odd that.
But, but the problem is that, that's not that intersection, that's Duttonville Road all the way in Ashton, it's backed up, it's backed into there.
Dan, could a reasonable condition set by the planning commission be coordination with the township professionals during the HOP process with PennDOT?
You have that authority to do that.
That's what I was going to ask too, George, do we have any influence over PennDOT in that process?
I have it many times in working with developers when they come in, going through the HOP process, work with PennDOT and the developer to go over the traffic studies, the issues that, that are seen from the municipality at the intersections and what plausibly could happen. And a lot of times we all get in a room, we talk about it and come up with a reasonable plan forward.
And that's a great point. So anytime, so we talk about making this application of PennDOT, PennDOT ultimately has to issue a permit. Anything and everything that we submit to PennDOT is also submitted to the municipality. So while PennDOT is reviewing it, the township is reviewing it as well. So when I get a review from PennDOT, I also get a review from the township. Sometimes the township's comments, PennDOT's comments are a little different and then we need to get in a room and kind of figure it out. But PennDOT requires that we keep the municipality in the loop and afford then the opportunity to review the plans and the documents as well. And then they also take into account any comments or issues that the township may pose as a result of those reviews.
So is it necessary for us to make that condition? So is it necessary for us to make that condition or will that happen automatically? Okay.
Anything else?
So, so I'm prepared to make a motion that we pass a preliminary base, a dependent upon, uh, improvements or at least consideration of, of Pendot improvements for the final.
And be a second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays, everyone.
Mission, when the authority is applying that it requires the municipality's, uh, planning commission, when we apply, it requires the county planning commission. So Southern Delaware County Authority is seeking $500,000 in funding through the PA Small Water and Sewer Grant. This is a project to, uh, update the Beach Street Pump Station, replacing two pumps, three VDFs, as well as manhole rehabilitation for 40 manholes and, uh, relining of 365 linear feet of sanitary sewer in the township. Uh, all of these projects are consistent with the comprehensive plan zoning and our ACT, uh, 537 plan. So all, everything is consistent on the application with, uh, what generally needs to be done for maintenance and upkeep of wastewater facilities. There's no action that needs to be done other than, uh, the, they, that this was presented to you and the, the planning, uh, either I would sign off on behalf of the planning commission or if we can get Char, uh, Charlie Fisher this week to sign the letter.
Okay. Any, any questions about it or anything? Now, is this like a Band-Aid for the sewer system or is this an actual repair?
Well, you could call them all Band-Aids or repairs. It's a program that's been opened up that provides a pretty good funding source for these types of, uh, projects. And they, you know, there's only a 15% match on this program. So it's a really effective way to utilize grant money towards, uh, you know, fixing some of the problems.
So the 75,000 gets built to the SDCA, which then gets put into our sewer charges, basically.
I'm sorry.
Said the 75,000 gets built to the SDCA, which then rolls into our sewer?
Yeah, SDC, so SDCA throughout the year, they apply for various different grants and they have contingency funds set aside through, you know, uh, billing effectively to operate. So this would be that they'd be utilizing $750,000 of cash to complete a $500,000 project.
75,000.
So I'm sorry, 75,000.
You said 750.
75,000.
So, uh, when is this work to be started?
It would apply for the grant on December 21st. Typically, that we believe that we would hear, hear from this grant within six to nine months. And then from there, typically it's like another three to six month process before you get a shovel on the ground. So probably looking at about a year to a year and a half.
So did they say how long the improvements will, how long it will, uh, last? How much, uh, time that it will take to complete the project? And what, what, what would the impact to, uh, local residents be?
We don't have any information about the length of construction. I would imagine it would get phased out due to there being work physically taking place at the pump station and then work out throughout the community, replacing the 40 manholes and the eight-inch sewer line rehab project. So, so my guess would be this could be anywhere from two to three construction cycles. Um, and the benefits to the, uh, the general public would be an update to the, the sanitation, uh, sanitary sewer lines. So the system would be better.
Which areas is primarily for?
Uh, well, the service area is upper Chichester Township.
Okay, because there was a map and it seemed like, like specific areas were shaded.
Yeah, uh, they're going to, I, I don't have the map with me, but the, uh, the project, they, they basically, they keep a list of the age of the infrastructure and then they go out and replace the infrastructure based off the age. And keep it, you know, keep in mind, this is, they apply for many different grants throughout the year for many of these projects. This, just this project through DCED requires that they could say a letter through the planning commission as well.
Okay.
So for the record, um, we should, uh, encourage the, uh, board of commissioners to get letters out to their residents, um, uh, keeping them advised of the progress on this and when, uh, the, um, projects are ready to be started and the impact.
This would be a project of the Southern Delaware County Municipal Authority. That's why it's coming in front of us because, uh, so it's not our entity. So, uh, that would be, I mean, you could, uh, might not be, as, as ratepayers, anyone, uh, could ask and say, this is, we'd like to know more about these projects and we'd like more communication as to when these are happening. Typically, there's a requirement that's built into the bid documents that the contractor is required to notify the area when these, uh, when these types of projects are happening.
Well, since this is a SDCA, uh, project, why couldn't we, um, urge them to send out letters, uh, to residents, keeping a brief on, um, impact?
I, I can say from personal experience, when they upgraded the laterals and the, um, the sewer line on Namens Creek Road, they did notify the residents, we were aware.
Okay. I guess we're done with that one. Uh, any other business with the planning commission tonight? Anybody? All right. Do we get a, uh, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are done.